I'd like to welcome everyone to this morning's forum on the topic of Zika. My name is Jayden Luishwar. I'm the Deputy Town Manager for the town of Palm Beach. We have a panel of speakers today that will be covering a number of different topics. I'm going to summarize a couple of things, but before I do that, what I'd like to do is have our panel members introduce themselves and I'll start here on my right and then work our way down.
My name is Gary Good. I'm the Environmental Program Supervisor for Environmental Resources Management for Palm Beach County, Mesquite Control Division. About 30 years' experience in mesquite control, most of that in the state of Florida.
I'm Maggie Zeidman. I'm a town council member and also a nurse. Very happy to be here and to have this opportunity to speak to our residents today. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Robert Jacobson. I'm a hematologist oncologist. I specialize in blood diseases and I'm affiliated professor at the University in Volkerutam, Florida Atlantic University, and I would too am really pleased to be able to do a presentation here today. Thank you.
Hello. My name's David Caladino. I have a PhD in molecular biology and focus in molecular therapeutics. I'm the Technical Director of Native Pest Management and hopefully we can all inform everybody of effective mosquito control solutions so that we can reduce the populations and reduce the risk of the island and the county as a whole. Thanks.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Caniglio who's here today and also our Town Manager, Tom Bradford, who is in the audience and has been very supportive and helping us to prepare for today's event. I want to point out a couple of just housekeeping things here before we get started. There is a sign-in sheet on this front table. If you're interested in getting a copy of the presentation that we will be providing today by email, just go ahead and give us your name and your email address. You don't have to do it right now. If you do that before you leave, that's fine. We also have some handouts to take away, just a one cheater that's on the front table here as well. Before we jump into today's presentation, I do want to say that this Zika situation is a very fluid situation. We're starting to hear more and more about this issue in the news every day now that we have confirmed non-travel-related cases here in the continental U.S. and South Florida specifically. So, you know, we would encourage you to make sure you're monitoring the situation after you leave today. I think you will learn a lot that could help you in prevention today, but we just want to emphasize that it's a very, very fluid situation and Councilmember Zeidman is going to have some statistics relative to infections here in the U.S. and abroad. The topics that we will cover today include what is Zika, how it's transmitted, what are the effects on human health, bite prevention, breeding prevention, and how we can all work together to try and mitigate the effects of this situation here at home and abroad. And then at the end, we'd like for you to save your questions. We'll have a Q&amp;A at the end. We want to make sure we get through the entire presentation and all the speakers have had a chance to deliver their particular message. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Zeidman to start off the presentation.
Good morning. I also want to thank a few people who've been so instrumental and supportive in making this happen today. Of course, Jay, Tom, our Mayor Caniglio, who has been so supportive, as well as the Citizens Association, the Palm Beach Civic Association, and our town. So with that, I'll move right in with these slides. This is our community forum on Zika. And just to add a little bit of levitating to it, just when you thought it was safe to go outside, you know, I'm going to try and advance this slide. Jay, is it this one? Okay. So Zika is here. So let me just ask you a question. You don't have, I don't want to see a show. It's all mess. But how many have had, have you had a mosquito bite within the last week, within the last two weeks, within the last month, within the last two months? And if you can answer yes to that question, then this forum is for you because what we need to learn to do, this is the most important thing that you can do, is to protect yourself from mosquito bites. Zika is carried by the mosquito. Unfortunately, you can become a host for Zika. So the Zika infection can grow in your body, the mosquito bites you, and then it, as a vector, bites someone else, and that's how Zika spreads. We're very used to mosquito bites and even diseases that are brought on by mosquito bites, but this one's different. This is a bird of a different feather, and the reason is that it seems it has a direct causal relationship, there's a direct causal relationship between Zika infection and fetal abnormalities, the worst of which are miscarriage, stillborn babies, microcephaly, but there's also a whole spectrum that's not known yet. As Jay said, this is a fluid situation, and the CDC, any report that they put out is always termed an interim report, and the reason for that is that it's just not known yet where we're going with this. We know some things about it, but we don't know everything about it. We're just, it's too early for us to know. The most devastating consequence of Zika is infection during pregnancy, and so that's why we all have to be very careful. You, I don't see anyone in the room who is of child care age, but there could be someone here, but there are some. Kathleen, some younger people up here on the panel. But we all do have daughters, sons who are married, granddaughters, and this is where our population has to be very careful with it. I have a daughter who's trying to have a second baby, and she's a doctor in Boston, and I have had a few mosquito bites. So I was tested before I saw her. I know it was bizarre. I'm sure Dr. O'Connor thought, what is she doing now? Why is she asking for this? But it just relieved my mind to know that I did not have Zika infection since I was going to be around Jess and didn't know if she was pregnant or not. So there is, this is the reason why we have to be careful. This is the reason why we have to protect ourselves from mosquito bites. Unfortunately, only 20% of people who are infected with Zika actually have any kind of symptoms, and Dr. Jacobson in a little bit is going to go into that in depth, what the symptoms are, but there's 80% of people who have Zika who are not aware of it. So if you just look at the 14 cases in Miami, in the Wittenwood area of Miami, of the, so we knew about four, but because they did door-to-door testing of urine, they found that 10 other people actually were infected with Zika. Only six, six of those people did not have any symptoms, so six of the 10 had no symptoms. What you'll read on the CDC website is that only 20% of people who are infected with Zika have symptoms. So why is that important? You don't know if you have it. We do live in Florida. Mosquitoes are here year-round, so the best we can do is simply to protect ourselves from mosquito bites. So that's what we're going to concentrate on, prevention. Let's see. So the question here is, Zika's here, now what? Will an epidemic happen here in the United States? Not likely. What you have seen in South America, Central America, the Caribbean, is we live in a different type, we have a different living situation. First of all, we have air conditioning. We have air conditioning in our homes. We have air conditioning in our cars. We don't ride around with the car windows down. We don't sit in cars with the windows down. We're not riding in the back of trucks. We spend, our summers are very hot. We spend a lot of time indoors in air conditioning. What we're not doing is protecting ourselves when we're outside playing golf, playing tennis, taking one of our kayaks out. That's when we're probably at risk. So we are very different. We take care of our lawns. We don't have tires on our lawns to collect water. We're more careful. So it's, no one is predicting that there will be an epidemic here in Florida, but we do have cases, and so we need to be respectful of that. So that's how we're different. We also don't have dense living quarters, and we, if we do have our windows open, we have screens. We don't have windows just open without screens. So we all know the next thing, that there's 14 cases of Zika. There will probably be more. Those were the non-travel-related in South Florida. If you want to get an idea, and this is from earlier in July, Zika in the USA, and this was the prediction, but there's something very interesting here. Okay, we can all see Miami and Palm Beach right there and Broward County, but if you look up at New York, it's, there's a significant population and prediction for New York City. So why is that? Well, most of the cases have been travel-related, and in places like New York and in Miami, we have significant populations who are traveling to South America, Central America, and so that's the reason for that. Now, the mosquito that that carries, there are two mosquitoes. There may be more, but there are two that we know of that carry the Zika virus, and one is, both are here, but one is very, has a huge population here, and that's the Ades egypti. There's also the Ades alvepictus mosquito. Some of my colleagues here know a lot more about this than I do, and they'll be talking about that a little bit later on, their habits and what we need to do about that. But they both live in our climate. They are day biters. I think that's important for you to know, since we are a very active society. Make sure you protect yourself during the day. The Ades egypti is the more common vector of transmission because they prefer to feed on people. We're alvepictus, we have animals, people, doesn't matter, but the Ades egypti, and you can hear them, they're very, they just zoom right in, and they really go for you. Unfortunately for Zika, there's no treatment. There's no vaccine. Our mayor has written a letter to the, our Congress, to the Senate, to the governor to try to get money released to say how we feel about it and that we're supportive of it. I think it's important again, let me just, it bears mentioning, only one-fifth of those people who are infected have symptoms, and then again, the spectrum of illnesses that it causes, microcephaly, blindness, deafness, mentally challenged children. And you can't, you cannot through sonograms or ultrasound during pregnancy find out about all of those things. Microcephaly, yes. Some of the others, no, not until a child misses a milestone during their development. So education of the public is the most important, prevent bites and mosquito control. Let's take a look at the incidents in the United States. This is not an up-to-date slide. This was from July 27th. The statistics are released every Tuesday, and so this is changing and very fluid, as Jay said. There are two different statistics that I want you to take a look at. First of all, there are 1,658 travel-related cases and 433 pregnant women in the U.S. In Florida, there are two different numbers here, 307, though I know the Miami Herald did report a day or two ago, 388. I'm not sure where they got that statistic from, but it could be accurate, and 55 pregnant women. This Zika virus is also transmitted sexually. It's very important for us to also recognize this. So travel-related, sexual transmission, there are 15 cases of male to female, one case of male, female to male. That's because it, the Zika virus, Dr. Jacobson will get into that, lives for a longer period of time in semen than it does in vaginal suprations. There's one case of non-sexual transmission. You will probably, are probably aware of that. That happened in Utah. No one knows how that happened, between father and son, so the CDC is following up on that. A case of lab, one case of lab exposure. And of course, as you now know, we have the 14 in Southern Florida, just north of the Miami area. There are five babies have been born with Zika. In June 29th, we had first baby in Florida born with Zika-caused microcephaly. Just take a look at this number, since December 2015, but remember, the living conditions are quite different, so this is not predicted to happen here. But Puerto Rico being part of our territory, this has significant financial impact. 5,500 cases in Puerto Rico, 672 pregnant women with Zika. The actual incidence, of course, is unknown because only 20% of the population has symptoms and, you know, we're not test, we're not doing broad-spectrum testing here. The CDC does recommend that if you travel, or your partner travels, to an area of Zika prevalence, that you do become tested. And now I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Jacobson, and then I'll be back with prevention. Thank you, Dr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Maggie, and really I'm going to focus on the clinical and medical aspects and then give the microphone back to Maggie to talk about prevention and other issues. For an individual who's infected with the Zika virus, there's several very fascinating issues that emerge. Number one, the infection starts as a symptomatic disease three to seven days after a mosquito bite, and it means that the virus enters the body and very quickly can cause symptoms. Now, this is only in 20% of patients. The vast majority of people may be aware they've had a mosquito bite, but certainly may be totally asymptomatic, and it presents like a flu. It's a flu-like illness. It can have fever, it can have joint pain, muscle spasm, muscle aches, headaches, lack of energy, and two other distinguishing features. It may have a rash that appears red on generalized part of body and then resolves, and it may have red eyes, conjunctivitis. These symptoms and signs just last for a period of up to seven to 10 days, and patient recovers. So what you've heard is that only individuals coming forward to their doctors with symptoms and being tested are being detected in these surveys. The other very important issue is that if the disease is confirmed, one has to report this to the CDC. This is a reportable disease. It has to be reported to the state as an infection with Zika virus, and in that way, they can focus on the area and they can focus on collecting the necessary statistics on where the infection is and spreading. There is one good quality of the mosquito, i.e. some, that is, it doesn't fly far. Its radius is short, only about 500 feet. So where it's been breeding, we'll hear more about this. You concentrate when you find a signature case with the Zika infection on that small area, and that's what we're seeing in the Miami suburbs. The other rare disorder, only one in 100,000 patients have had a virus or a bacterial infection, it's not limited to the Zika virus, is syndrome called Guillain-Barre, which is a paralyzing disease in which a immune reaction occurs against the nerve fibers, usually starting in the longest nerves in the body, which are the nerves to the legs and feet, and then gradually numbness sets in and potentially involving the breathing muscles, and patients can end up on the respirator. Most have patients recover, can take a long time, and usually comes on pretty quickly after the infection with the Zika virus, whether an individual's symptomatic or not symptomatic. Fortunately, in this country today, no devastating cases of Guillain-Barre have been reported, although one has to consider it in the setting of other viruses and bacteria. And talking of that, we live in a subtropical and times bordering tropical environment, so other viruses are prevalent here, and we have to be aware going forward with globalization, with travel, of people all over the world and exotic travel. Viruses are being introduced into this country that previously we had never experienced. So there's a virus called Chitengunya virus, Dengue fever virus, all of which can cause similar symptoms to Zika. So one doesn't automatically assume if one has this flu-like illness that it is Zika. One needs also testing to exclude other viruses. Interestingly enough, yellow fever is of the same family, the same type of virus, and yellow fever has been one of the most successfully conquered diseases in the world due to a vaccine that was developed in the 1930s. So there's a lot of experience with a similar virus and a vaccine, and the hope is going forward that the Zika virus vaccine can be more rapidly introduced into our population prevention. Right now, there's a lot of research that is focused on it, and again, additional funding would help greatly. So whether one is pregnant or non-pregnant, 20% of patients can present with a flu-like illness. It usually resolves, and the question is, how do you confirm that, how do you confirm the diagnosis? Now, interestingly enough, even though there was warning that Zika is coming, Zika is coming, the laboratory testing on blood and urine is still in the investigational phase. Specimens have to be sent to the CDC or they're sent to so far approved, I think there are two commercial laboratories that will do the testing. This testing is not universally available for blood banks. So what has emerged is that in Miami-Dade and Broward County, blood banks have said individuals who live in that area until we can test it for the virus are not to be considered blood donors, which is a very major public health issue. So the question is, where do they get the blood from? Well, fortunately, in this country, blood banks all over the country belong to a blood bank, I'm going to use the word union, a blood bank super service, that if one blood bank is short of blood or cannot raise donors, blood can be shipped in from elsewhere in the country where there is an excess. Actually, unfortunately, I don't know if you've been following the Red Cross story and blood banking, they are in a shortage at the moment, so the whole blood bank supply is under some pressure at the moment because of the Red Cross and because donors in Miami-Dade and Broward are excluded from donating blood. So blood can be tested using a technique looking for the virus called PCR, the Limerick Chain Reaction Test, very specific for the virus, and is looking for a particular strain of the virus. In yellow fever and in Dengue fever, there may be more than one strain, so one has to be alerted to possibilities over time. Other strains may emerge. And the other test is looking for the antibody against the virus that the body produces on its own, and that takes about seven to 14 days before it emerges, and it takes about two weeks before one can see that the antibody is in full production. Nevertheless, most individuals recover very comfortably from their disease irrespective of the antibody type. Now, you heard that it's can be sexually transmitted, and for that reason, there's a large focus on male semen where the virus can be identified up to three months after exposure. Why it is in the semen, why it remains there, does it relate to a particular large load of virus? Is it an unusual strain? So at this point in time, Zika, like HIV virus, is considered a sexually transmitted disease, and one has to be very cautious about exposing individuals to the virus through sex. Of course, and preventive measures are strongly recommended if an individual has been in a Zika area or is Zika-infected. The urine can be tested two weeks afterwards, and lastly, there's a lot of focus now on looking at newborn babies. A corded blood, blood in the placenta can be tested, and there's devastating pathology if a baby has the infection in the brain showing brain damage from the Zika virus. But hopefully through the major efforts of prevention, we can avoid many of the severe consequences of the infection in pregnant women. Lastly, I'm just going to focus a bit more on the pregnancy issue. Clearly, as we get more information, how long it remains in the semen, does it remain in the vaginal fluid, is it at risk, is our babies at risk at the time of birth through the birth canal? All of these are under very active investigation. Individual women who plan to have children need to discuss this with their family doctor and not a physician. How would you see, certainly it's not recommended at the moment to consider pregnancy if one's living in areas of Miami-Dade or Broward counties. It's conceivable of diseases move further up the Florida coast and elsewhere, this would be, these proportions would be extended, avoiding travel to high-risk areas we've commented on, and avoiding sexual contact with partners infected with the Zika virus for the duration of pregnancy and other situations certainly use condoms. So this is a disease that has come upon the, I'm going to say, Western world. It clearly has been present, it was first identified in Central Africa in 1947. The virus was isolated, it's been in Asia and Polynesia for many, many years that we're aware of, and yet it was probably only sporadic cases that caused microcephaly, and it was not picked up in the public health surveillances that were going on in these emerging countries. So at this point, I'm going to hand the microphone back to Maggie to talk about prevention and other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jacobson. So how do we prevent it? What do you need to do? What do we need to do to prevent this mosquito bites? And we're going to just spend a little bit, a little bit of time on this right now. We're going to talk about it in more in-depth as we go through the morning. On the table in front of you, you'll see several products that our task force has put together that we might want to take a look at. These are, there are larvicides and products that you will apply to your skin, these types of things. One has DEEP, one has Oil of Lemon Eucalyptus. And the other thing that's on the front table here that we urge you to take home is an instruction sheet that we have put together about how to apply and who to apply these different products to. Some cannot be used on infants, none can be used on infants under two months old. Two of these products cannot be used on children under three years old, and that's all listed on this information sheet, including what products you need to look for, what does the product need to contain. So we'll go into that just, just a little bit, but it's there for you to take home, take with you to the grocery store, to the pharmacy, to get what you need. There's also baby knitting there. Okay. So what we're, what we're going to ask you to do is to survey your surroundings. There is a, everyone talks about drain and cover. So you want to drain any type of water that you find around your home, cover things that might, where water might get into them, just cover them. Remove any object that's unnecessary that might collect water, such as dishes that we have under plants. Repair your screens. Air conditioning, please use it instead of having windows open, using screens, and Jay's going to go into this in more depth. Vermilliads. Vermilliads do have, do contain water. They collect water. Larvicides, adulticides, repellents you'll see on the table, safe sexual practices. If you have traveled to an area where there's a high incidence of Zika, it's recommended that you use condoms or abstain, especially if someone is pregnant, that would be for the duration. Wear long sleeves, long pants, and keep your ankles covered. Light clothing, I didn't find anything to really support this, but you see it very frequently, and it seems to work, that they don't seem to like, like, light clothing as much as like dark clothing. Many of us will slap at a mosquito. Make sure you wash your hands because that mosquito may have Zika. may have Zika. Be vigilant, help your neighbors. A lot of people are away during the summertime, they're traveling. If you see something in your neighbor's yard, please take care of it. We need to help each other out. We'll talk a little bit about interior, exterior spraying, mosquito netting for stroller car seats and cribs, but we have to be very careful with that. It has to have a border that is elastic, it has to be tight, and you should really use this only when, when you are going to be present, because you don't know what child will do with the netting. Some of my friends in the, in Garden Club have suggested that there may be some plants and even critters, which we have talked about a little bit, that may keep mosquitoes away. One was lemon grass. And these are the repellents here that are EPA approved and recommended by the CDC. And again, the handout has all of this on there. DEET up to 30%, picaridin, and there are some examples of some of the products that do, that do carry these different ingredients. Oil of lemon eucalyptus, paramethan diol, IR-3535, that's Skin So Soft, which we have been familiar with for some time. Promethrin is a repellent but also an insecticide. It is only to be used on clothing, never on the skin. And as I say, there are many more detailed instructions on that handout. So treatment, elimination of Zika is the goal. So we need to develop a vaccine. In the meantime, what the best we can do is just to prevent a Zika infection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Iden, Dr. Jacobson. That was very, very informative. I'm going to focus a little bit on bite prevention, but before I do so, just a couple of comments. I want to welcome Councilmember Danielle Moore, who has joined us since we've begun, and Council President Pro Tem Dick Clyde is here as well. I want to point out that as we go through this morning, the rest of this morning's presentation, you will hear some repetitive, repetitive information, there will be some redundancy, and this is by design. There are certain things that we really want to reinforce with you this morning, specifically with breeding prevention and bite prevention and transmission. So this is, I just wanted to point that out so that you could bear with us. So let's talk about bite prevention, what we can, sorry, what we can do to prevent bites. As Maggie said, and the doctor, mosquitoes primarily, or the Zika virus is primarily spread through mosquito bites. There are other ways that we've talked about, but bite prevention is key. One of the key things to do is keep the mosquitoes outside. There are things that you can do, such as spraying around your property. Maggie talked about dealing with containers. One of the nicknames for this particular type of mosquito that is carrying this virus, this container mosquito, they breed in small bodies of water. We've learned that they can breed in a bottle cap that's full of water. There may be a Coca-Cola can that's hidden in your hedges that you don't know is in there, that's half full or a quarter full. They can breed in those environments, so it's very, very important. And David's going to talk a little bit later about what landscapers and other folks in the service industry can do to help us identify these types of things later on this morning. But it's important for us to turn over, scrub the known containers that are on your property, and then keep water storage containers tightly covered. And I know we all use screens on our doors, if we dare to even open the windows at this time of the year. Another thing that you should do when you're traveling, I don't know who doesn't do this, but if you're traveling to a tropical climate, make sure you find a room that has air conditioning and keep yourself protected. The other thing that you can be doing is creating a barrier between you and the mosquito. That could be a physical barrier, a chemical barrier. We talked about covering up, that's one of the best things to do. Make sure that you're wearing long sleeve clothing if you're going to be outside. And then, you know, there are treatments that you can apply to clothing, there are, there is clothing that's all, that's pre-treated, that you can take a look at. Insect repellent, again, we're going to keep reinforcing the importance of making sure that, that you're protecting yourself and your family when you're going outside. Read the instructions carefully, there are certain things that you don't want to do. One of the things that I want to point out is make sure you're applying your sunscreen first and then the repellent second. That's very, very important. Make sure you're protecting your family. Maggie talked a little bit about babies, infants, and making sure that you're not applying these insect repellents. The biggest thing you can do is cover them up and cover up the strollers when you are Protect your partner. One of the, you know, we've talked about this, but one of the points that I want to emphasize is that Zika can be passed through sexual contact before symptoms start, during symptoms, and after symptoms have ended. So it's very, very important that we pay attention to this. The CDC has advised that if you are pregnant, that you shouldn't travel to areas where Zika is very, very prevalent. Obviously, we know that it is here in South Florida, but it's not to the degree that it is in certain Central America, in South American countries. If you're trying to get pregnant, you need to really think about how important the travel is. And to reinforce another point that Maggie mentioned, just because you're not of childbearing age or you're a male, you can be the host, and you may not display symptoms. So it's very important that you still protect yourself during travel. If you choose to travel, do your homework, even if you don't feel sick. You really need to be preventing your bites when you get back home to make sure that it is not spread. The CDC's website, if you go to cdc.gov, there is travel-related information that is updated constantly. Again, I mentioned early on, if you'd like to give us your email address, we can send you this entire presentation, which includes this website link. So that does it for my part of the presentation, and now I'm going to turn it over to Gary Good from Palm Beach County.
Good morning. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about how we do things in mosquito control, what our services are to you folks here in Palm Beach. Palm Beach County Mosquito Control is part of Environmental Resources Management. That's under county government, and that means we service the entire county, from top to bottom, side to side. We have several cities that are running their own mosquito programs. Palm Beach does not have their own mosquito program. What we do normally in these cities is we try to work closely with them. If it's a nuisance problem, we let them handle it on a local level. If it's a consistent mosquito breeding area, we'll come in there and help them out through our use of Larbicides. But primarily, most of the city operations are strictly adulticide programs. They get some phone calls, and they'll send out the spray truck. This one? Okay. Now, the nuts and bolts of what we do at mosquito control are based in mosquito identification. Now, most people, when they see a mosquito, they're just going to swat it, and that's, that's it, that's all there is to it. But we have about 35 different kinds of mosquitoes in Palm Beach County. At any given time in our mosquito trapping system, we get as many as 12 species. About half of those are nuisance species. A couple of them might be vectors, and a couple of them don't really bother anybody at all. We have one mosquito that actually lives in crab holes. You ever seen these large land crabs running around? You might have a few up here in Palm Beach. There's a specific type of mosquito that lives in there, doesn't bite, doesn't do anything, except live in those crab holes. So not all mosquitoes are bad. But just a word about mosquitoes in general, there's a lot of talk lately in the newspaper, we've seen some stories about bat houses and things like that. Now, we don't discourage if somebody wants to put a bat house, but mosquito, insects occur in what are called outbreaks. You might want to think of the bull weevil situation with cotton. They have a monoculture of crops, and this mosquito, this insect either gets resistant to the insecticides, or for whatever reason, the population just explodes. Now, when we're talking about biological control, like bats, dragonflies, purple martens, on and on and on, all different organisms that control insects, they do a job that works pretty well unless there are outbreak situations, as I was saying, like the bull weevil situation. And the reason why I bring that up is mosquitoes, as a natural state of being, are always in what would be considered an outbreak situation. There's just too many of them for natural controls to keep them under control. And probably the biggest natural control we have is fish. We have minnows in just about any pond, any ditch, any wet area, if it's wet for longer than three weeks, we'll have fish in it. And indeed, we're getting a lot of phone calls from people saying, "I've got a pond out in my backyard, I've got a ditch, or there's this puddle here, and I'm worried about Zika." And that is not anything to worry about, especially if it's a long-term wet area, it's going to have fish in it. But most importantly, Zika does not originate with mosquitoes that live in those habitats. This is, as mentioned before, strictly mosquito that's passed by container mosquitoes. They've had some laboratory experience with one other mosquito, but there's nothing in the field confirming that mosquito is carrying it. So we're considering primarily this 80s egypti as the primary vector, which we do have quite a few of them around. We also have 80s alpictus. They tend to be in the more urban areas with lots of trees, excuse me, rural areas with lots of trees, because they seem to prefer tree holes. So what we do at mosquito control is we do a continual monitoring of our mosquito populations. It works fairly well for some of our long-term nuisance problems, which originate out of the western parts of the county and come east. Unlike a lot of coastal mosquito control operations where they have salt marsh mosquitoes, we really don't have any salt marsh mosquitoes. There's, there's really not any salt marshes left in Palm Beach County that is producing significant amounts of salt marsh mosquitoes. So we're kind of, it's not like to joke, we do things backwards in Palm Beach County. We've got mosquitoes coming out of the west, out of the Everglades, and that's why you hear when we're talking about doing air operations that we're spraying Western Military Trail. That's not because you all, you all don't have mosquitoes over here, but the kinds of mosquitoes that our aerial spraying can affect generally don't make it any far east than Military Trail. So in the eastern parts of the county, we concentrate on getting out to your communities and spotting where the mosquitoes are coming from and getting rid of them. I'll talk a little bit about that more later. Just to talk about mosquitoes and their biology, there are stages of their life that are similar to the butterfly. You have butterfly, you have the egg, the caterpillar, the cocoon, and then the adult. That's called complete metamorphosis, and mosquitoes share that type of lifestyle. And for the purposes of mosquito control, once that mosquito is out flying around in your neighborhoods, it makes it extremely hard to target that organism for any kind of chemical control. So we try to focus our efforts on, first of all, eliminating the locations where they're being produced, the dump and cover, drain and cover, the idea that you just get rid of where they're, where they're being produced, and then you don't have to worry about them anymore. So the second thing that we're going to focus on is larbicide. This isn't really the case with these container mosquitoes, because if you can just dump something out, there's no point in spending tax dollars to chemically treat it. So, but when you're talking about something like our diseases we've had here for literally, literally decades, like St. Louis encephalitis, and more recently, West Nile, these are diseases carried by mosquitoes that live in wet areas, they're nighttime flying mosquitoes, and our spray equipment works fairly well on controlling those. And in particular, when we're targeting some of these wet areas, we find them breeding mosquitoes, we'll larbicide them, and as I mentioned before, generally, that's in the western communities. East Military Trail, there's not a whole lot left, it's all been built on. There's a few pockets that we deal with on a regular basis through our ground inspections, and we treat them when they're being, when they're being a problem. Now, there's two different ways that mosquitoes reproduce, that is how they manage their egg laying. A lot of our disease vectors, in particular the ones that carry West Nile and St. Louis encephalitis, lay their eggs on the water, and they're laying in batches of about 200, and we call them a raft. And why that's important is they cannot lay eggs unless they find someplace that's wet to lay them in. And that's crucial to the process of some of these other diseases we have, because that gives time for the virus to build up in the mosquito. So if we're having a drought, these mosquitoes are waiting around, waiting around for, and we found is about a month, a dry spell, followed by a rainy spell seems to trigger those types of diseases. They also run in about an 11 to 13-year cycle, and that's because the reservoir host, and what I mean by reservoir host is we have wild animals out in our, wild, in our woods, anywhere that, particular birds in this case, that these diseases cycle as a natural state of being. And just like any other exposure, they develop a resistance to it through their antibodies. So when the bird populations ebb and flow with new birds showing up replacing the older birds, it takes about 11, 13 years for that cycle to go through where enough of the bird population is susceptible to infection, that then we have an outbreak. That's why we don't hear about these diseases very often. Contrary to that, we have things like Dengue, Chikungunya, malaria is a lesser of a problem, but now we're talking about Zika. This is a virus, this is a disease, I can show up at any time, as long as somebody brings it in. There's no wild host like birds, and I think in yellow fever in Africa, there was monkeys. There's no wild host, so it's strictly dependent on people to bring it in. And that's what we're seeing now, is folks traveling to other parts of the world, and coming back and coming down infectious to those diseases. Now, contrary to that is our mosquitoes like 80s egypti and 80s alpictus, and also our salt marsh mosquitoes. The reason why salt marsh mosquitoes are so bad, and if you've ever been in the Keys and getting your arm, gotten your arm chewed off by mosquitoes, those are probably salt marsh mosquitoes. What they do is they lay their eggs on the ground where it's dry, but somehow they know that it's going to be wet. So they lay their eggs there, and if it's not wet and it's not flooded, those eggs can just accumulate and accumulate and accumulate. And if it's not wet for years, you're going to have years' worth of egg accumulation. And then the tides come up, or you get a rain event that floods those areas, and they all hatch out at once. So that is why, if you've ever, like I said, if you've ever been in the Keys and got your arm chewed off, that's because of the biological cycle that those mosquitoes go through, that encourages them to occur in huge numbers. With 80s egypti, they do a similar thing, but instead of laying their eggs in the bottom of dry mud puddles, they, for some reason, have decided that they're going to target man-made objects. Originally, this mosquito was introduced into this country about 400 years ago, and originally lived in rock pools along, along the edges of rivers. For example, we don't have too many rock pools here in Florida, but in Georgia, there's a lot of exposed rock outcrops with rivers flowing over them, and along the edges, they'll have little pockets here and there. And that's the original home for this mosquito. Now, over the past 400 years, this mosquito has made that jump from that habitat to artificial containers. And what they'll do is they'll lay their eggs right above the water level, and we get a little bit of rain, doesn't take much to get that water level up, and that's going to hatch those eggs. So that makes it very difficult for doing, for us to do any kind of control efforts, because even if we do come out and we spray an area, if there's something producing those mosquitoes, just a little bit of water in that container can hatch out a new batch of eggs, and literally the next day, you're going to have a new batch of mosquitoes coming Now, just to explain a little bit about how we do things in Palm Beach County, as I said before, we do things a little backwards. Rather than coming from the coast, we have mosquitoes that come out of the Everglades. And you just saw there, the arrows are showing our mosquito populations. After a rain event, they'll start migrating out of the western regions. We have swamps out there, we have the Everglades, we have lots of horse pastures out along the edge in Wellington, which is one of the reasons why Wellington does their own mosquito control. They have a lot of mosquito production areas around their edges that consist of pastures. And when these pastures flood, they do just like the salt marsh mosquitoes, it's a different species, but same It's a different species, but same kind of biology. These eggs will hatch out all at once. They're not disease carriers, but they are very annoying to the folks living out there. So what we'll do in response to this is we literally have to wait for these mosquitoes to complete their hatch off. So that might take a few days, and people don't like to hear that. They want us out there spraying right now. Well, unfortunately, if we spray too early, there's still more coming out of the swamp lands, and we'll have to spray it again. So what we do is we wait for that migration to complete. And then we'll go ahead and spray those areas that the mosquitoes are showing up in. Now, one of the things that we've heard frequently from our public is that they really think this spraying does a lot of different things that it really doesn't do. For one, it does not affect the eggs. The eggs are virtually indestructible. So nothing is going to affect the eggs. The spraying does not affect the larvae. We have different materials that we use on the larvae, but that poses its own problem, because if you ever fly into Palm Beach County and just look out west of the developed area, to the horizon, you have wetlands. You have the Everglades, and we have those sugar fields to the west. We would literally break the bank about five or six times over if we tried to larvicide all those areas. So it's feasible, it's not really economically feasible to larvicide those areas. So that's why we don't decide with the aircraft. And as you can see here, those mosquitoes are traveling eastward, and they don't really get very far towards the coast. They get about Military Trail. As opposed to our container mosquitoes, and we can tell by the way the phone calls are coming in. If we have a hatch of mosquitoes that are coming out of some wetlands to the west of us, the public lets us know. We get a lot of phone calls when that happens. And as a matter of fact, that's actually in the law that allows us to do our spraying activities, is phone calls. It's studied and researched, and phone calls are a really good indicator of mosquito problem. We also augment that with our traps. So it isn't just the phone calls. We look at traps, we do ground truthing. But when we get phone calls about container mosquitoes, we can tell by how the phone calls are coming in that it's container mosquitoes. And as mentioned earlier, that 80's egypti has a limited flight range. So what that means is if you have a production source, the people that are going to be affected by it are a pretty limited area. You're not going to have all of Western Mocha that's calling us. You're going to have just a few people. Sometimes it's even just one person that calls. So what we'll do is we'll go out to these locations. We'll check around the property in what's called a premise inspection. This is a service we provide to everybody in the county that requests it, including the city of Palm Beach. We'll do a premise inspection, see if we can identify where the mosquitoes are coming from. If we're lucky, we can spot it and either get rid of it, notify the homeowner, what they can do to get rid of it. For the most part, spraying is the last resort, because if we spray, as I mentioned before, and don't identify where they're coming from, we're just going to have to come back again, because there's a new batch that hatches out to replace that batch that we sprayed. So in general, we're not going to spray for this type of situation, because it's really not effective. Now, we're also getting a lot of calls from people saying, "Well, we don't really have any mosquitoes, but I'm worried about Zika. Can you come and spray?" Unfortunately, that really doesn't help much. If we go and we spray when there's no mosquitoes there, once again, it does not affect the eggs, it doesn't affect the larvae. It's going to only affect the adults. So it's only going to knock down what adults are there. And if there's no adults, we're not going to hit anything. So we try to encourage people to find alternatives to their mosquito problem, especially with the Zika virus and the types of mosquitoes that carry it, where it's within our control as residents to eliminate those breeding sites. Let me just talk a little bit about the technology. One of the reasons why everybody hears about our aerial spraying is because the FAA requires us to issue a press release whenever we do an air operation. We spend three, four hours doing an air operation about five to six times a year, is what it averages out to be. Now, that compared to the amount of time we spend in your neighborhoods looking for mosquito problems, eliminating mosquito problems, and treating from the ground these mosquito problems, that aerial operation is a very minor part of what we do. But because we're required to do a press release, everybody is aware of it. Unfortunately, everybody is aware of it, because we want people to be aware of our activities. But we don't send out a press release when we're checking people's yards. We don't put out a press release when we're larvicide a patch of woods. And people just don't hear about that. Ground spraying, the drawback to ground spraying, and this is more importantly in our western communities, where we have three, four, five acre lots, the ground spraying only reaches about 150 feet off the road. And if you have a lot that's two or three acres, we're just not going to be able to cover that lot with our insecticide. So that's why we focus mostly on aerial spraying for our western communities. And lastly, mosquito control, unfortunately, is one of those things that if we're doing our jobs and nobody's getting bitten by mosquitoes, people tend to just kind of forget about us. It's sort of like the fire department. Fire department, and nobody really thinks about the fire department until your house is burning down. So that's one of the things that we try to remind people is that you might not be aware of what we're doing. We're more than happy to come out and see what your problem is and try to resolve your problems. But as we've talked about repeatedly, education, awareness of your surroundings, and being proactive with your properties. You know your yards better than we do. If it's something that's been tossed in your yard by somebody driving by, say the bottle cap, something as small as that, somebody's driving by and tosses it out the window and it's in your bushes, you're going to have mosquitoes from that little bottle cap. So the best thing that you all can do in Palm Beach is if you're having mosquito problems, just look around your yard. Crawl into the bushes, you're going to have to. If you have somebody, your landscaper, and I think we'll talk about this a little bit, have them look around to see if there's anything that's holding water in your yard. And it can be anything. I've seen some really interesting cases where there's mosquitoes being produced. Now, one of the things that I like to frequently talk about is one occasion I went out, we couldn't figure out where this mosquito problem's coming from. And the cable guy had come out there to work on the cable, and he'd forgotten to put the cover on the cable. Just a little cover, about that big, just left it sitting there, and that thing was full of mosquitoes. So just like here in Florida, we have the threat of lightning. If you're getting bitten by mosquitoes, pay attention and see if you can figure out where they're coming from. And if you can get out of that situation, just like you would with lightning, get out of that situation where there's mosquitoes, and that will do a lot to avoid your exposure to these diseases. Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
My guy's not right here.
It's on the way.
Oh. So my name's David Paladino. I'm here representing the pest control industry in this. And it's important to understand that we have a serious responsibility to take these actions that are set forth by the community, by local and state governments. There's only one city council, there's only one mosquito control board, with thousands of us. And so we have the opportunity to leverage our knowledge and our presence in the community to actually educate people and make a serious impact on this problem. So I want to talk about integrated pest management solutions for mosquitoes. And integrated pest management is basically a top-to-bottom approach using not only chemical treatments, but looking at customer education, physical exclusion, prevention, all the things that can stop bugs, stop pests from occurring, stop them from getting to your home, and stop them from being in your property. And then if they are in your property, how would you reduce them? So it's a wholesale approach, and it's very important to what we do, and especially, it works really well for mosquitoes. So I want to talk, I'd like to kind of focus on homeowners, property workers, property managers, people who will be on properties regularly. We talked about the life cycle of these 80's mosquitoes. And they will undergo a life cycle of about seven days if it's warm enough. So it's critical when you're doing inspections that you reduce standing water weekly. So if you go every couple of weeks, every month, now you've got three potential life cycles of mosquitoes that can be breeding in between inspections. So it's good, and I'll talk more to landscapers. I know well the frequency of some of these workers' presence on properties, so we can use that to our advantage. Palm Beach has sort of this advantage of a lot of people not only visiting countries that have Zika infections. We are a good place to breed mosquitoes, but we also have the benefit of having a pretty good presence of workers on properties, and we can kind of put out a good amount of information and combat spread of disease and breeding mosquitoes. So this little graphic here is a common graphic, and it just basically shows the common spots where mosquitoes will breed on our property. So you can see in old tires, in clogged gutters, leaky spigots and downspouts. Again, the 80's mosquitoes will look for moist areas that will throw the standing water, as well as in containers. So if you've got a leaky spigot, you can be breeding mosquitoes without actually having a container to have standing water. And so, you know, making sure your window screens are sealed, making sure your pools and ponds are treated, those are critical for reducing populations. So I think this is probably the fourth or fifth time this has been said, that the milk cap, bottle cap standing water does not take much. And it can produce hundreds of mosquitoes, and they can go fast. So it's important to be thorough when you're looking around properties, trying to find potential sources of breeding. So these mosquitoes prefer to lay their eggs near the ground. So if you're going to focus on one thing, focus in about five feet from the ground, because they've evolved and adapted to live with us. They love, these mosquitoes love us. They, we're their favorite thing. And they tend to breed and populate the areas about average human height, because they like to bite us, so that's where they like to be. They'll breed high, and so it's important, things like gutters, things like trees that may have some potential for standing water, they're important too, but they really do focus. They like to lay their eggs, and their habitat is right about where we are. And like I said, the standing water being removed weekly is a pretty key aspect of strong control for homeowners. So as far as landscapers go, I know that most houses that have landscapers visit them, they have them there weekly, which is perfect, because you want to remove mosquitoes weekly. So landscapers and mosquito control actually goes hand in hand. And for landscapers, do it out of self-interest. Don't do it for the homeowner, don't do it for the county, don't do it for the state, do it for yourself, because you're there, and you're putting yourself at risk by not paying attention, not seeing where you're breeding mosquitoes. And by doing this thing for yourself, you're actually benefiting the rest of us. So it's a win-win for everybody. And again, I think just about everybody also talked about repellents, and I'd like to reinforce repellents. I think it's probably on the handout, but permethrin is, you can treat your clothes with it. It'll last six weeks or six washes. So patient compliance is a major issue with health problems. It's hard to get somebody to spray himself with an insecticide repellent every few hours. If you can treat your clothes, then you can not worry about it. So anything, something like that that can increase compliance with mosquito prevention, it's an easy thing to do, it helps you, and it helps everybody. So for landscapers, I think you pretty much know where you're going to see mosquitoes. So planter beds are a big one. They can hold enough water to support mosquito populations without looking like they've got a lot of standing water in them. And broken or leaky irrigation heads too will produce the same effect. And again, for your benefit, if you've got planter beds, if you've got broken or leaky irrigation heads, you're going to have a problem with the landscape. So make sure that you look for those things for your own business, as well as for the prevention of mosquitoes. Vermilliads are a tough one. If you have a property that you know has a lot of vermelliads, make sure that the homeowner knows these need to be taken care of. You can add larvicides. And we've got these mosquito dunks, they also sell little bits. They can be added every couple of weeks to the vermelliads. Once they fill up, they contain a natural bacterial insect larvicide. It's safe for people, it's safe for pets. It's really bad for mosquito larvae. So it's a good thing for vermelliads. There's not much you can do about dumping them out. And also for landscapers, if you see vegetation over gutters, clogged gutters are hard to tell. You're not really under roof looking down very often. And so you can, I don't know what my gutters look like, really. So you have to keep an eye on it and keep it in mind, because it's easy to forget about, and then you don't know where your mosquito population's coming from. I just know that there's tons of them, and then it turns out you've got a gutter full of water and mosquitoes. Also, it's not just the island, it's not just the town. These can be obviously at your own homes, but also nurseries are a great place for mosquitoes to breed. So most landscapers have a nursery back at their office, and just about everything in a nursery is prime for mosquitoes breeding. These planter pots, upside down, right side up, even the lip around the edge can hold water, enough water to promote breeding. So they need to be regularly checked for standing water and emptied out in order to keep the competition down around where you're at every day. Also tires, tarps, tarps covering equipment, tarps covering sand, tarps covering. There's a lot of uses for tarps. And you'll get, if you have it as a sun cover, make sure that you're inspecting it every day, every couple of days for standing water. You'll reduce the population of mosquitoes in your home, your area, and it'll help keep you from spreading the disease if it is in the area. So now for occupants and property managers, owners, you're sometimes around the property, sometimes not. One of the important things, like I said before, is make sure that your gutters are cleared. Check them every so often. It takes a while for them to clog up, but they'll hold enough water to really be an issue. And so it's, you can have gutters that are clogged without having enough, without having vegetation over top of them. They're just a pain, and we deal with it pretty consistently from our end. Also, just general refuse in the yard, and also in hedges, back behind hedges, back in plants, in plant beds, where you're generally not trudging around, there could be a piece of, you know, a chip bag, something like that, something to hold just enough water to promote mosquito breeding. And again, now you've got the problem. And the best thing you can do is prevent the problem from happening. Trash cans, buckets, recycling bins. Recycling bins, again, upside down, right side up. They have a lip around the edge, Recycling bins, again, upside down, right side up, they have a lip around the edge and they'll hold precisely the amount of water that mosquitoes will breed in. And so if you turn it upside down and think, okay, I'm covered, I'm good, now you've got a different habitat from what you thought was the problem. Also, this is a really common one and I think people should know, if you've lived in Florida, birdbaths, fountains, you know, man-made standing water, make sure that it's treated with chlorine, make sure that if it's a birdbath, make sure that it's cleared out regularly. You can also use the mosquito bits in those. Doors and window screens too, physical exclusion is important. So keeping mosquitoes from being able to get into the house. If you've got, if you've got a window screen that's cut, that's not seated properly, or if you've got a door where you can see pretty, where you can see daylight from the inside, that's bad. Anywhere you can see the outside from the inside is where things from the outside will get to the inside. And that'll help with general, all kinds of bugs and pests, but really mosquitoes, if you can keep them from getting to you, it's important. So one of the methods for homeowners, for active control, I've included citronella candles and I think a lot of people give them a lot more credit than they're worth. They've been shown to be moderately effective. They can reduce bites by forty to fifty percent in some cases and they cover maybe four to five feet. So if you have a lot of candles spaced out appropriately, you can generate some semblance of protection. And if you add repellents to, you have long sleeves, you have repellents on your clothes, repellents on your skin, you should be reasonably well protected. But it's important to know that they, that they're not a magic, they're not a magic mosquito repellent. They have some use, but they're not the best. And then larvicides, there are a couple of different larvicides. Some of them are chemical, they're insect growth hormone additives, we use a lot of those. And then the bacterial products is Bacillus thorgensis, it's a serotype, Israellensis and these are, they produce a protein that's highly toxic to mosquito larvae. So if you put them into standing water, if you put them into a birdbath for example, the mosquito larvae in that little wiggle phase, they'll be eating bacteria, they'll be eating whatever they can find. And if you've got this in your standing water, they'll, they'll take it up and then they'll just die without you having to, without you having to do too much active mitigation. So it's good for treating vermilliads, treating birdbaths, it's safe for animals to drink and it's a, you know, it's a natural product. So you can get it reasonably easy, you can get it on Amazon, I'm sure you'll probably start to see it in Walmart now because it's going to be a big thing here. The last thing that I also want to talk about on this aspect is misting systems. I know a lot of people have misting systems here. And they can be reasonably effective as an adult acidal. Some people report that they work, some people report that they don't, a lot of it's anecdotal. And their theory is sound. If you spray when they're active, you should see reduction in adult populations. There are a lot of problems that arise from these types of systems. So again, they're primarily adult acidals, they're not targeting towards, they're not targeting the larvae, they're not targeting the breeding sites or the breeding capabilities of these mosquitoes. So the best that they can hope to do is reduce the adults that are going to be around. They also, because they're spraying the same chemical at the same time over and over again, you get, you get a sub-lethal dose application and it's sort of like when you take antibiotics and if you say, I'm better, I've taken them for three days, the doctor said seven days, I'm fine. That's the best way to promote resistance of those organisms. And these are, mosquitoes are no different. If you give them less than you need to kill them, you'll select for resistant populations. And so you can actually now promote an increase of mosquitoes on your property because you have an anti-mosquito system. So they're, they have a lot of downside that kind of counterbalances their positive. And also, we've seen it a few times where because, again, they spray in the same spot over and over again, they can actually cause damage to landscape plants. So there are a lot of strategies for homeowners or property workers to help aid with mosquito control on a property. If you want, there are a lot of professional services that employ this integrated pest management, this integrated pest management approach. So basically, it's a, they work monthly, they come, inspect for all standing water, treat any place that may have standing water with the biological larvicides, also fogging with insecticidal residual on any harborage sites as well as a lot of, I know that we use the insect growth regulators and a lot of others do too. It's proven that insect growth regulators and adult acidal insecticides in combination in these ultra low fogging systems are the most effective method of delivery for that type of approach. But one of the benefits is not just the guy with the backpack that sprays the lawn, sprays the leaves, but it's somebody who's there who knows what to look for, understands the places that you're going to have the most likelihood of mosquito breeding and them being able to constantly monitor that. And also you can talk back and forth with the customer. So there's a couple of different products that you can use. You can rotate, you can use, they're called synergists. If you start to see resistance in a population, you can adjust your treatment plan and knock the population down and then not go full bore and have now pyre resistant insects and mosquitoes in your lawn. So it's, there are a lot of benefits to professional services and interestingly, we found that they're comparable to the misting systems in terms of price, if not less, which is an interesting, it's been interesting for us to see. And I think that's all I thought, so thank you all.
Thank you. I don't know about all of you, but I'm checking my gutters tonight, flowerpots and everything else around the house. Before we get into the Q and A portion of the presentation, how about a round of applause for our panel members? I'd also like to thank the Civic and Citizens Association for their partnership in helping us to host this event. I'd like to thank David from Native Pest Management, Dr. Jacobson, council member Zeidman, and Gary Good from Palm Beach County. Really appreciate them being involved this morning. I do want to point out, including our panel members here, we have division chiefs Burke and Baker here from our fire rescue department. Division chief Burke is head of EMS and Baker is head of training and safety. They're here as well as a resource to you all and any questions that you might have relative to how they train and how they prepare for infectious type diseases, mosquito form and otherwise, here that we may deal with in Palm Beach. So with that, any other comments from our panel members? And then if you do have a question, if you can come up to this podium on my left to ask the question, that way we can get it properly recorded and the answer properly recorded. We are recording today's session, it will be online. If you're bored later and you want to listen to it again, or send the link to someone who might be interested in this topic.
Just two things. I do want to point out that our website, the Town Palm Beach website, has a lot of information on it. So that's townpalmbeach.com. You can also look at Civic Association website. So just to point you in those directions, there are some numbers also on the handout, including poison control number, should anybody have a problem with any of the products that are being used. And I did forget to thank someone earlier who was very helpful to me. She is Wendy Victor's daughter, who is a resident here, Wendy and Mike Royal Victor, residents of Palm Beach. Their daughter is the head of a thirty-member team of doctors and researchers who are studying Zika and how it crosses through to the baby and hurts the neurologic cells in the developing fetus. So her name is Dr. Christina Adams Waldorf. And so I do want to thank her as well and her panel. Thank you, Dr. Jacobson, and Dan Jacobson.
So if anyone has any questions, if you can just come on up to the microphone and we'll try our best to answer them.
I want to thank you all for a wonderful presentation. My name is Warren Belmar, I'm a Palm Beach resident. We've spoken about the danger to the fetus and to the mother from infection. What is the danger to a newborn child, ages up to one year old? If it's a danger while they're still unborn, what danger are they exposed to as a young child?
I'm going to say that that information is now being looked at. There is the concern that the mother who's infected and delivers a baby, the child may have had no effect throughout the pregnancy, the mother got infected in the last week of her pregnancy. And as the child is born, gets exposed to the virus, they have yet, they have yet to publish on the newborns who are free of the disease, who get infected in that setting, whether that affects the newborn brain. So that's an area of research and interest to pediatricians particularly and the information that I think will be available in the next several months.
A note, Dr. Jacobson, only that what you and I had mentioned prior and that is that they're, it's not an expectation, but what they're looking for is a spectrum. It's a very good question and I thank you for asking it because they're looking, we're looking for a spectrum of developmental issues that you don't recognize until a child misses a milestone. So I think that's what's important, it's so new, we're not, we don't know.
Mike Brown, Palm Beach Civic Association. Once an individual is bitten by a mosquito and they have Zika, how long does it stay in their system? Do we know that?
Yes, the virus can be found in the blood and urine two weeks after the symptoms start of the illness. Thereafter, the virus appears to clear and immunity develops for life. However, whether it's related to being infected through sexual intercourse or whether it's due to a mosquito bite, it appears that the virus in some man remains in the seminal fluid for up to three months. So there is that concern then that there may be a state that is quiescent in terms of causing any disease, but the virus may be still active.
My name is Susan Garrett and I'm a resident of the town. I have a question for Mr. Good. Imagine that there were some towns in the county that do their own spraying. Can you describe the process that a town has to go through to do their own spraying?
Yes. We're regulated by the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. And under the law, to do what's called public health pest control, there's a certification process that individuals engaging in those activities have to do unless they're treating their own property. There's a great guide to how to go about getting your town set up at the DAX website. I don't have that information with me, but if you want to talk to me about it later, I can tell you where to look for it. But you'd have to get approval from DAX and there's some steps you have to go through, some documentation to prove that you have trained personnel doing the work. And of course, then there's the budgeting issues and it's not cheap to do mosquito control. You'd have to buy some equipment, you'd have to have somebody dedicated to actually doing mosquito control work. But there's a lot of different things you can do, but I think primarily it comes down to, you know, is it worth the expense that you want to put into it?
Outside of the pregnant population, that there is a danger if you're bitten and get the Zika virus, that you have a outside possibility of getting, I think it's called Gengay-Barré syndrome? Is there any truth to that assertion?
The client, the answer is yes. Gengay-Barré syndrome is a nerve paralyzing disease. It's associated with a number of viruses and other bacterial infections. It's possible the virus injures the nerve cells in an adult and then triggers an immune reaction or in fighting the virus, it mistakes the nerve cells for foreign and causes an immune destruction. It's a very rare event, even in individuals who don't have Zika virus. The incidence has given one in a hundred thousand individuals to get a viral bacterial infection. The few cases that have been reported in Brazil and in French Polynesia, all recovered. But it's not something that is so prevalent, we have to be fearful of. It is generally recoverable.
You know, this time of the year, people are traveling and a lot of people are traveling to South America, we're having this great event in Rio, we're going to have people going down and coming back. Would it be advisable for people, I don't want to cause a made rush to doctors' offices, but would it be advisable that when they come back, that they get blood tests?
Yeah. The Health Department has done a great job in their outreach. As a matter of fact, if you've been to the Palm Beach airport, there's signage there basically addressing those issues. Be aware of, you know, where you're traveling and what you're doing. Unfortunately, we as an industry of mosquito control have to rely on passive press coverage. And I think that we probably need to step that up and actually start, just like the politicians are doing right now, start buying airtime. And I really think that's where the answer to this comes from because not everybody reads a paper, not everybody goes online, not everybody watches TV. But if we actually start being proactive and pursuing these educational opportunities, that might be what we need to do.
If I can add as well, all of you in this room, we see as a resource in helping us to generate greater awareness. So we have information on the town's website today, that information will be expanded. If you can point your friends, family, neighbors to the website, we are not, the town is not going to recreate information that has already been produced by the CDC, the county and others. We see ourselves as a conduit to these different organizations who are the experts in dealing with these matters. But, you know, for those of you who visit the town's website, we want to give you an easily accessible place to get this information. So you can help us in that regard. You know, I'm ambitious, I see lots of media here in the room today, which is great and I'm sure we'll get good coverage, but then they'll be on to something else. But we can really rely on your help to pass this information along. So go to the town's website and you'll find information there.
Hi, thank you very much. Dragana Connaughton, I'm a resident of Palm Beach. And I had a question, are you recommending removal of vermilliads in your gardens?
It's, I mean, if, so if you're not taking care of them, it's probably best, basically you have harborage sites and you should try and do something about them. So whether or not it's getting them, you know, dropping some of the mosquito bits in them every couple of weeks or something like that, it's best to remove all breeding, all harborage sites. So it's the same as kind of having a bucket sitting out there, yeah, you would remove that. So if you're concerned and, I can't advise against being concerned, yes, I'd probably say either do that or in some way make sure that that standing water is not hospitable to breed in.
Okay, and are there any home remedies that you can do yourself? I have heard a few things from a friend of mine from the garden club that recommended oil and water, that it was sprayed into the vermilliads, that it interfered with the egg laying. Was there any truth to that or?
There are some, there's some larvicides that they, they're based on breaking surface tension of water. They're not quite as long lasting.
There's probably.
Yeah, it's not as effective as.
We as in mosquito control, try to avoid recommending people taking matters of it on hands using oils because immediately somebody goes, well, hey, I've got all this motor oil sitting in my garage. I think I'll use that stuff. I mean, this is literally the catch 22 that we run into with these types of issues. Yes, oils will work, but it's a Band-Aid effect. It's only going to kill the mosquitoes that are there at the time. It doesn't last forever. And eventually, if you're not paying attention, a few weeks go by and you're not diligent about it, you're going to be back to breeding mosquitoes. Literally, you do the same thing with a garden hose, flush it out about every three or four days.
Thank you. And we have that contact information on the website today. Like I said, we will expand the information that we have on the website and put a big shining light around mosquito control districts that outline for those of you who may experience some problems. Not seeing, we hear.
Just one thing, thank you, Jay. These, both of these products are off. This is DEET, this is twenty-five percent DEET, DEET Woods. Off, family care, this is Pecaridin. And it does work.
Right. And this product is a five percent.
Right, this is five percent.
And I think that that's generally, it's what you used on, it's younger individuals, children, things like that and larger babies, not small babies. But twenty percent Pecaridin is what's found to be the most effective. That's the, that's the dose that's approved by the FDA and they're doing a lot of toxicological testing to see whether or not they are able to increase it. The maximum allowable amount is thirty percent and because the reason is that over that amount, it has minimal added benefit and it has a lot more side effects. And Pecaridin, at least at twenty percent, is safe, effective and just as effective as the twenty-five percent and twenty percent DEETs. But if you, you gotta pay attention to the label and make sure that you're getting what you think you're getting because it's easy to, we see this with just general pest control things. You can buy the same stuff at Home Depot, but it's a hundred times less or ten times less or a thousand times less than what generally gets applied in a professional setting. So if you understand what it is that you're getting, you'll get the right thing.
Well, I hear grumbling stomachs in the audience, which means it's about noon. I want to thank you all again and thank the panel members for participating today. I want to thank you all again, and thank the panel members for participating today. The takeaways, prevention, bite prevention, protect yourself, breeding prevention, do what you can around your property, spread the message, awareness, that's the other takeaway. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to call the town and visit our website. If you want a copy of the presentation, we'll have it on the website, but go ahead and give us your email address. We'll stick around for a couple of minutes if anyone has any individual questions. But again, thank you for coming, and have a good day.